Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to connect. You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting. The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute. You are unmuted. This meeting is being recorded.
The City Council Local Redevelopment Board meetings are now in session for the city of Riverbank. Today is Tuesday, December fourteenth, 2021. It is 6:00 PM. Before we start the meeting, this meeting is being held in accordance with the California Government Code, Section 54953, Subdivision Echo of Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code 54950 at SEC, the Federal Americans with Disability Act, and the recent St. Louis County Health Officers Mandatory Face Covering Order, September second, 2021. While this meeting is being physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of this agenda for participation information. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
I'd like to take a moment to, for the people back in Tennessee and Kentucky that lost their homes and some of them lost their family with those tornadoes that went this weekend. But take a moment of silence, please. Dear God, thank you for the faithful servants you've brought together to fulfill your purpose. You have given us willing hearts and a desire to proclaim the name of Jesus through word and deed. We ask you to give us wisdom, patience, and guidance as we plan for the future. Jesus taught us to speak and to seek you first in all things, he said. But first, seek the kingdom and his righteousness, and all those things will be given to you as well. And we began our meeting, help us to first seek you and your will. Help us to respect one another and work together. We give you the glory for everything that is accomplished. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District Two, Rachel Hernandez is absent. Council Authority Member District Three, Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Four, Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Luis Uribe.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Agenda changes, there will be one. We'll be taking item nine point two right after the declaration of conflict of interest. Is there any authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item? To be considered is declare their conflict at this time. Saying none, we're going to move directly to nine point four. And the reason for this is that this is also a signing ceremony. So we're going to just do the signing ceremony and then go back and do the entire meeting. If this is approved. Item nine point two, a resolution of the Riverbank City Council and the Local Redevelopment Authority Board approving a purchase and sale agreement for parcels two and two A at the Riverbank Industrial Complex with Ametis Properties Riverbank LLC.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, Council. As I said a couple of months ago, when we, when we closed the first two-thirds of this deal, we are thrilled that we are finally at this final step. And this represents years of work, both on behalf of myself, my staff, our city attorney, our Washington DC-based reclosure, Attorney George Slossberg, who's on the line with us this evening, and Ametis, who has been a fantastic partner every step of the way. This is the culmination of many, many things happening at once. The city, over ten, ten years ago, taking control of the Riverbank Industrial Complex, developing a strategy for leasing that site and building it into a green energy facility, and then, most recently, finding a master developer that's willing to invest hundreds of millions of dollars to create jobs and, and create a new industrial park in our area that will hopefully employ our residents for, for decades to come, while at the same time improving our air quality and environment. The first two components of this land, lease disposition and purchase to option, or, excuse me, purchase to, to, option to purchase, apologies, were completed some months ago, and those were for, on the screen there, parcels, the main parcel, which is known as parcel A, and parcel B, and the stormwater parcel, which are on the left side of the screen there, on the northernmost edge of the site. The agreement that stands before you this evening is for parcels two and two A, and this is actually sort of interesting because the city does not currently own or have rights to sell parcels two and two A. However, the Army has agreed that since this is an economic development project and it aligns exactly with the Army's goal of using this site at its highest and best use, to exclusively sell those parcels to the city of Riverbank. Those parcels are critically important to the industrial development of the site and are critically important to Ametis, and therefore, we've negotiated what amounts to a pass-through agreement with Ametis whereby the city will purchase the parcels and will pass those parcels through to Ametis at, at the same cost, plus $50,000 for expenses in undertaking the transaction. The reason why these, this agreement was not approved back with the two original agreements was that the city was in the process of working through what's become a more complicated state legislation that's known as 1486, which is Surplus Lands Act. And it requires that the city go through a variety of steps to declare a land surplus and then sell it to a private entity. What we found as we attempted to go through that process for parcels two and two A was that the state was not willing to approve that because the city does not currently own those parcels as the Army has not yet made them available for sale, though they're, they're working on that now. So our attorneys kind of went back to the drawing board and drafted an amendment to the agreement that basically states, at the time at which these parcels are available for city purchase from the Army, this agreement will trigger and go into effect. Ametis will deposit the funds into an escrow account. The city will apply for the exemption with the state for these parcels because, believe it or not, these parcels are actually, at least in, in our opinion, exempt from the Surplus Land Act because this is a superfund site and these parcels are not appropriate for any kind of humid habitation, only industrial use. And when the state issues that, which seems they've indicated they will, the escrow procedures commence and the city sells those parcels to Ametis, who are already less seized of the, of that property and will be able to move forward with, with their plant and development plans at that location. So that sort of sums up the agreement in, in short. I did want to make sure that I gave George Slossberg the ability to add in anything that I may have missed because he's lived in, in the depths of this agreement for a number of months now. And so, George, is there anything I, you'd like to add?
No, Sean, you captured everything perfectly. The only thing that I would add is that parcel two and two A were eliminated from our EDC agreement with the Army as, you know, with our consent as part of the original EDC agreement. The EDC agreement is with the city as the LRA. Because this is not part of the EDC agreement, the city will be purchasing parcels two and two A as the city, not as the LRA. So, but the end result is the same. Once the parcels are made available by the Army for sale, the city will purchase them and, under the agreement that is before you today, we agree to simultaneously close with the Army and then close with Ametis or as soon thereafter as is possible. So, no, this is the final, this is the final straw in what has been a very, very long transaction for the city and the LRA.
And so, I'll, I'll just close by, by noting two other components. This will, this will trigger, the, the signing of all, approval of this and then signing of, of the three documents this evening will trigger a number of important things. First off, Ametis will have now rights to move forward with, with further design of their plan and eventual construction. Second, the city, as has been the council's goal for many, many years, will finally begin to transition out of day-to-day management operations at the site, and those duties will, will transfer to Ametis. And the city's new role at the site will be hunting for grant funds and helping to coordinate the development of the property so that, that jobs can be created in the, the short term. So I think that pretty much sums up what we've discussed many times before, but I just want to make sure, since this is the last time we'll be talking about it, at least at this council stage, that I went through it in detail. So, have it answer questions.
Are there comments or questions of Sean from the council? Sean, I want to thank you and you, George, on the efforts that you have had over the last five years, Sean, but George, for the last eleven years in, in doing what's right for this property, for the city and the surrounding community, and also for the Army. With that, this is a public meeting. Is there any public wishing to speak on this item? Saying none, I would like to offer, if Mr. McAfee would like to make some comments. Mr. McAfee, Eric McAfee is the CEO and owner of Ametis, who will be constructing a $750 million plant out there.
Thank you, Mayor O'Brien, and frankly, I'd like to just take an opportunity to thank you personally for your support through that, this entire process. And I think you acknowledge Sean's role, but frankly, the entire staff of Riverbank, both at the site as well as at the, at the city, have been very supportive. And George, back in Washington DC, the poor guy, it's what, almost midnight back for, for him on some of these projects. He's been very supportive of the project. So without that support, we could not have gone forward with this process. It's a complicated process, and we are very pleased now to have built up our team to support the work that's out there. Some of those team members are, are here today. And over time, we hope to achieve our goals of, first of all, making new investment. It is over $750 million of new investment in, in our town that will be achieved through this project. But frankly, achieving new employment. This is a site that used to have over 3,000 workers, and I think we have an opportunity, not just with green energy, but frankly, with attracting some of the talent that is having to leave here as they go out of school and then they go to college and they kind of disappear. We'd like to attract some of that talent to stay here and to grow the community. So I, I'm excited about our ability to work together with your team. It's already proven to be very supportive to achieve those goals. So thank you very much for your efforts in the past and looking forward to working together in the future.
Thank you, sir. So now, we're going to do the signings, and who's going to direct the signings? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I have to bring it back to council for consideration. Darn.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve item nine point two?
A second.
We have a motion to approve item nine point two in two seconds. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Now, we're going to do the signing of the documents. Yeah, we're going to get everybody in. First, we're going to sign it, and Gabby, would you do the picture taken, please? And this, these projects are going to be here for generations. It's not just for, you know, the next couple of decades, but it could be, what, ten generations that will be working out that plan. So, who's directing how we sign this? Will we just sign?
There should be down, at least in your place.
Okay. All right, listen for the lease deposition. All right. Council and Sean, come on down around. Listen, you have to.
Oh, yeah.
You give this height.
Go in the middle, Tom.
Yeah, come on up. Bring your team up.
Yeah, we'll, 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 there. There you go.
That's a good-looking bunch right there.
Yes, it is.
Are you ready?
All right.
Why don't you do yours? Do you want to do your phone?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do one without that. Can you do one without that?
No, my phone is not this long.
Hold your breath. This is going to be on the front page of the magazine. We need to watch.
Yeah.
Hold it, hold it.
One more handshake, we'll get a mask. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, man. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, you will.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be in touch.
Merry Christmas to you and your team.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to thank you all for indulging me in what I thought was something that needed to be done separately from the meeting. So now, we're going to continue on with public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Do we have any public comment? Please just come straight on up. And if someone else is going to speak, please follow immediately.
Hi, I'm concerned about the interest in developing the Riverwalk and the River Bottom and annexing that property. That, it's an area that I've lived here all my life. I've seen it flood many times. It seems unconscionable to lead people to believe that that might be a safe place to live and also dangerous to develop a place that might turn out to not be so optimal and then have to service it and deal with all the problems there. We've had river problems elsewhere in Riverbank, in my recent memory. Candlewood comes to mind, and that we didn't expect or intend. And I think to, to build right on the edge of such an obvious flood plain is really dangerous and a huge, a huge change, and maybe not a very well-planned change in the city of Riverbank. That's all.
Thank you.
I'm sure I'm less than three minutes.
Hello, my name is Corinne Whitlow. I am a resident here in Riverbank. I'm also a nurse. I'm here today because I strongly oppose the mandates that are coming down from our governor. I am out kind of working every angle and trying to figure out what we can do to kind of protect ourselves with local jurisdiction. So I'm here today to request an actual, a future discussion item on an agenda which would allow opportunity to talk about a resolution within our city council. I've seen other city councils pass resolutions which oppose the vaccine mandate for people to participate in society with having that requirement of being vaccinated. I believe these mandates are a one-size-fits-all solution. I also don't think they're scientific. Science is ever-changing, and to create a plan or essentially a mandate, which isn't a plan, it's just a one-time action, on a situation that is ever-changing can be very dangerous. And we're learning new stuff about COVID all the time. We're learning new stuff about the vaccine all the time. We have been in a state of emergency for over 20 months. That's very concerning to me. Either we are not doing something right or we have failed leadership. I would love an opportunity to not speak at you, but to have an opportunity for discussion in regards to this. I do apologize, I'm not as prepared as I wanted to be. I actually worked 55 hours in the last four days. That straining healthcare system that these mandates mention, it's a real thing. My concern is, all of the plans that I see talk about the virus. They don't talk about our healthcare infrastructure. This is a very dynamic situation, and in my mind, these mandates are very simple-minded. I thank you guys for the opportunity. I know I've spoke about this publicly before. I do think it's important to note today, I was at a Board of Supervisor meeting, and there was a nurse there who works locally, and she has been placed on unpaid leave and is set to be fired. There are other employees within her facility who work locally in an acute care hospital who have been fired. If we are in a state of emergency, why are we firing our healthcare workers? It's scary to me that we can continue on this route, so I'm here to just ask for you to do what's in your local jurisdiction, which a resolution is. I realize that that is just a way to communicate with the state, and so I'm asking to do that today, and I know I've provided examples for you before. So if you guys have any other questions or need me to forward those examples, again, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Sean, my name's Annabelle Gammun, and I live in River Heights, the unincorporated area. Tonight, I come a little bit different. I'm here to say a few I'm here to say a few words about our city manager, who I got to meet when he first moved from Gustine. So I've known him when he was really a young man. And my hair was all black, so. Anyway, I would like to say that it has been a pleasure to work with you, Sean, and to know that when I would call or email you on an issue that you would respond with transparency and immediately. So I hope. It's a little bit nerve-wracking when I read just in the newspaper that he was moving, because we have a very big thing going to happen here pretty soon, hopefully, the Riverwalk development, which is a very controversial development-specific plan that's coming now to our city. So I would just like to say, though, that I hope the council and anybody who has, well, you're going to decide what you're going to do interim, and who you're going to assign to be, take the place of Sean for a while, that the optics would be that we, as public, can also feel the same confidence. So this is a very big deal, the Riverwalk development, because, in my opinion, it's premature, and this is land that really shouldn't be built on. And I know that we need housing here, but with all the new rules now coming from our state here in California, and the government, federal, we are getting serious about land use and building, climate change, environment, and equality, justice for the environment. So, good luck, Sean. I will really miss you. And I still remember you, you still didn't have a family when I first met you, so I feel like really old here, but good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dan Wetstone. I live on McHenry Avenue. My house overlooks the Riverbottom, where the Riverba, uh, Riverwalk project is proposed. You know, I know one that lives around that area is in favor of this project. I, you know, I can't imagine anybody in the city of Riverbank being for this project if you just look at the traffic and, and, and that prime ag land out there. So anyway, I guess the EIR is coming down the pipe, and so please look at that with a very critical eye. And I guess we'll keep reminding you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Wetstone. I also live on McHenry Avenue. And I also am very opposed, very much opposed to the Riverwalk development. I think it is such a horrid idea on so many levels. The idea of where the water is going to come in for these huge storage tanks that they want to put in, that the sewage that they want to ship across, or pipe, I should say, across the, under the, the river, from what I understand, to Escalon, the Escalon side, which Escalon was my hometown, that seems just like such a recipe for disaster. I know there's already a pipe going over, but it just seems like you're taking, why take up all this wonderful, beautiful, prime ag land? We need it for food. We don't need more pavement. There, the more you pave, the less rain you're going to get. And it's just, it, it just seems like such a horrid idea, and when there was a neighborhood meeting where Bill Berryhill, who is one of the co-owners, I understand, of the Riverbottom property, his, um, his fellow spoke, and I said, "Where do you plan on growing the food?" And he said, "Oh, it's my understanding, you can just go down here to Save Mart and buy the food," and Say O'Brien, sorry. But anyway, it just seems like such a, I, I thought, I thought that was so horrible of him to make light of something that matters so much to so many people. I, we need this beautiful greenbelt, we need the farmland. Put the housing where the property, the land, isn't so wonderful. I have other reasons, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Karen Conrado. I live on Hoag Road. I'm here tonight because I, again, want to bring up my opposition to Riverwalk. And, you know, hello to everyone, to the mayor, and vice mayor, and council members. I want to state that I'm talking today about Riverwalk, even though people have commented and asked why we are talking about Riverwalk so early, that there hasn't been a proposal formally made yet to the city council. But the Riverwalk was mentioned in the nineteen, in the 2019 strategic plan, and again, it was mentioned in the 2021 update. So I feel that there is expectations that Riverwalk will soon be in Riverbank's grasp, and I want to oppose that thinking. And I don't think it's too early to voice our opposition to Riverwalk. I think all of you are responsible for the public good. I hope that all of you think very long and carefully about the consequences of paving over this rich agricultural land that is on a floodplain, and that it's not if it will flood, but when it will flood, and how much damage will occur, and how much loss of life or property, and/or property. I just feel that, in my opinion, you would be ethically and morally responsible for any loss of life and property damage. You have the future generations to consider. Once this land is paved over, it's paved over forever. It's not possible, really, to bring it back to the quality it is now. So I hope that you think very long and hard about the decisions you'll be making. Thank you.
My name is Charles Neal. I live at 2312 Rio Verde Drive in Riverbank. And I'd like to address this council as far as that school up there, Rio Altero School. The traffic problem that you have in the mornings and in the afternoons, and the way that those people come in and dump their kids off, and then they go around the block, and then they come in, and they take the parking. There needs to be something done up there. I don't know what, but there, you know, there needs to be something done, because sometimes in the morning, if it's early in the morning, we can't get out. And then in the afternoon, it's the same thing, about two-thirty in the afternoon, from two-thirty to four o'clock. It's just incredible up there. And, you know, they need to go in there and do something, because those cars, they'll, they'll get in that, in that lane. It's not a lane, it's not a parking, you know, and it's painted gray. And they just slowly go down through there, well, they block us from going to our homes. And, you know, I don't know, I've talked to the school about it, but they don't seem to be able to take care of the problem. And that's one thing. And Sean, I didn't know you were leaving this place.
Um, I get the opportunity to announce that. I guess I don't, but I will announce that later on tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's amazing.
Please, give me the opportunity to do
Yeah.
the fun things.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just to clarify one thing Annabelle said, I, I did have a family when she first met me. I just didn't have children, so I'm not an orphan or anything.
Good evening, my name is Fred Walton. And I just wanted to make a few comments on the Riverwalk. I too live on Hoag Road, and it's a spectacular view looking over the Riverbottom. But really, that's just my own, my own desire. But we have to question ourselves, what's best for the Riverbottom? I would like to see all of you, before, if, if it comes to a vote for Riverbank, to drive around that Riverbottom two or three times. And look how beautiful that Riverbottom is. It's definitely one of the, one of the wonders of the world. And how the relationship with the river is with the Riverbottom, and how the bluffs have a relationship on top. There's different, different geology as you go from river to Riverbottom to bluffs. And I've always said the high-density real estate belongs closer to town. And as you go out, maybe bigger parcels, and it's a good farming unit out there. So it's going to be a tough decision for you guys, and at least know what you're voting about. At least take the time to drive out there and look at it. Drive down Hoag, drive down those dirt roads down there, drive up on that river, that river bank that is between the river and the Riverbottom, and, and, you know, maybe go down into the, into the soil and walk under the walnut trees and, and grab a few pumpkins, and you'll really get a feel for it that way. And it's a wonderful piece of land, and we have to make a good decision there. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Veneman. I also live on Hoag Road. Have concerns about this project, and along with the annexation of all of our area, all the way up to McHenry. As a father of young children, the biggest concern is traffic. Traffic's already a nightmare to get out of our road in the morning to go to school for my wife, to come home. And I know they're widening, widening McHenry, but I don't see how this project happens without additional stoplights on McHenry, which is just going to cause more congestion. You know, they're talking two thousand homes, so we're talking four thousand-ish cars. I just don't know how that's going to work. I feel like we tend to build out and then figure out the roads kind of on the back end of things. Roads don't pay. I know that. But these roads are already maxed out. And also just having all those people out there, we spent the money to move out there to be on a dead-end country road, not part of a big development. So, yeah.
May I ask how big your ranch is?
Mine?
Yes.
Uh, where I live is just three acres.
So it's a house on a big lot?
It is, yeah, what you would call ranchette. But my farm, I'm a fourth-generation farmer on the west side of Modesto, so I understand agriculture also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Saying none, we're going to go forward with the consent calendar. Consisting of item, put my glasses back on, eight-one, wave readings. Item eight-two, consideration of a resolution authorizing the city to implement teleconference, public meetings pursuant to assembly bills three-six-one, allowing the city to continue a hybrid virtual meeting environment. Item eight-three, a resolution authorizing the transition of a public works administrative intern position part-time to an administrative clerk position full-time, and allocate seventeen thousand five hundred dollars in funding from the Water and Sewer Operating Funds for additional salary and benefits. Item eight-four, acceptance of the sewer collection system smoke test project conducted by National Plant Services and coordinated and inspected by Kelson Sidnok New Deck, Inc., and authorizing to file a notice of completion. Item eight-five, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a grant agreement for a California emergency solution grant to fund homeless outreach and shelter services in Riverbank. Item eight-six, approval of the July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one city council and local redevelopment authority board minutes. Item eight-seven, approval of the August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one city council and local redevelopment authority board minutes. Item eight-eight, approval of the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one special city council minute. LRA item eight-point-nine, a resolution authorize approving the First Amendment to the Agreement for Local Redevelopment Authority General Council Services, and have the LRA chair execute the First Amendment. Is there any comments or questions from the city council, anyone wishing to pull any of those items? Is there anyone from the public wanting to comment on any of the items? Saying none, I bring it back to this board for consideration.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as read.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Council authority members Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odiva?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item nine-one, second reading by title only of proposed ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven. Amending the Riverbank Municipal Code by repealing in their entirety sections one-five-three-point-zero-zero-three definitions, one-five-three-point-three-two-five accessory drilling units, substituting them with a new section one-five-three-point-zero-zero, and one-five-three-point-three-two-five, and adding a new section one-five-three-point-three-two-six through one-five-three-point-three-three-zero.
Thank you, Mayor. This item remains exactly the same as last presented by Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager. There have been no substantive changes made to the, to the ordinance, and so we're happy to either rehash that presentation if you need to, or answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the council?
No.
Anyone from the public wishing to have any clarification? Saying none, I bring it back for the council's consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item nine-point-one.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on nine-point-one.
Council members Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odiva?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Public hearings. Item ten-one, a resolution accepting the fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one annual AB sixteen-hundred report of system development fee activity.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is a, a routine report that we are required to do on a yearly basis, and it, it is a state requirement for the collection of our system development fees, and our new-ish finance manager Tammy Alcantara is going to present this evening.
Tammy, before you do, I left my pen up there. Now you have to take notes. Either one is works, that one. Oh, I get two. That's good.
I get two.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Tammy.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and the public. So tonight, I, I am presenting, as Sean indicated, the AB sixteen-hundred report for fiscal years twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. You can go to the next slide. Or do you want me to take that? Would that be easier?
It doesn't seem, oh, no. Okay, wait a minute. Yeah.
So what is AB sixteen-hundred? It set forth specific recommendations as how local government imposed, collected, and reported various aspects of their system development fee program. Development fees provide the mechanism for new development to mitigate their impact on city systems. AB sixteen-hundred was codified as section six-six-zero-zero-one of the California Government Code, and became effective January first of nineteen eighty-nine. Riverbank System Development Fee Program has been in effect since nineteen sixty-seven, and was codified in the Riverbank Municipal Code under one-fifty-point-three-one-B. Maybe?
Turn it towards Annabelle.
No. Oops. What back one? There you go. System development fees are defined as a charge by a local government agency to help fund and pay for the construction or needed expansion of infrastructure and improvements as related to new development. The purpose of these fees, again, is to defray all or a portion of the cost of public facilities related to the development project. The following information must be made available to the public within one-hundred-and-eighty days after the last day of each fiscal year. You must, the report must include a description of the type of fee in the account or fund, the amount of the fee, the beginning and ending balance of the account or fund. the amount of the fee, the beginning and ending balance of the account or fund, the amount of the fees collected and the interest earned, identification of each public improvement on which fees were expended, and identification of an approximate date by which construction of the public improvement will commence. Description of each inter-fund transfer or loan made from the account or fund, including the public improvement on which the transferred or loaned fees will be expended. The amount of any refunds made during that fiscal year. So the city has inactive funds that we are no longer collecting revenue for and expenditures are made, expenditures made are included within the capital improvement plan. Current inactive fund balances as of June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. We have our Bridge and Roads Fund at thirty-five, eight-thirty-five, Overpass Fund at one-eighty-nine, six-sixty-one, and a Railroad Crossing Fund at three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. And then we have our active funds. Um, we are actively collecting revenue from new development. Expenditures are made pursuant to the city's Nexus Fee Study as of January twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen. And active funds currently collecting fees, um, but as of reporting period had no expenditures. So June twenty-twenty-one balances for our streets, um, three-point-five million. Our Water Fund had three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, wastewater fund five-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, storm drainage fund one-point-one million, Parks and Recreation Fund eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, and then our Police and General Government at three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. Some of our highlighted projects in the fiscal year were the Oakdale, Maril to Westgate, our well number twelve, which is, um, developer reimbursement, uh, Rozelle Crawford Sewer Project and the Park Master Plan. And then we made our last payment on the animal control vehicle. So it is recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution accepting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-twenty-one Annual AB sixteen-hundred Report of System Development Fee Activity. And I am available to answer any questions that the council or anyone may have.
Are there any comments or questions from the council?
I have a question. So the funds that are no longer active, so what happens if we decide that we want to reactivate those funds? Or reactivate that fund account? Do we rename it or do we, um, just, you know, put the funds back in it or?
So we, I would imagine, and Marisol might be able to help me with this, but I would imagine, um, that we've determined them not active so we don't have any kind of active fee schedule for that. So we would have to reestablish those fees with consulting and establishing what improvements those would go towards.
Thank you.
That accurate?
Yes, that is an accurate statement. Um, we would not necessarily reactivate them to collect fees, but we would look at reallocating the fees to other projects that the city, um, has in mind that would sort of fit the narrative of what the original intent of the collection of those fees were. So for example, the Bridges and Overpass Fund could go towards bridges and overpasses. Um, and although we don't have a specific project set for that, council has the, the ability to set that project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. I'm opening this item up for discussion from public. Do I have any public input?
There is no one wishing to speak.
And no written comments?
No written comments received.
Thank you. Then I close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item ten-point-one.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item ten-point-one and a second.
Council members Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odiva?
Here, or yes, sorry.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes, I'm also here.
Motion passes five-zero.
All right, item ten-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adopting the Modesto Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan.
Great, uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, this is, um, if you're, uh, following other agendas in and around the area, you'll see this popping up, uh, on, on many, um, City Council and Board of Supervisor agendas as we're all members, or most of us locally are members of this agency and have been for many years, and Michael is our representative and has been for many years on that. And this is a, a pretty important approval here. This is a document that's been worked on for quite some time. He's gonna step you through why we're approving it and what it means.
I'll do it.
You do it.
For you.
Okay. Uh, evening, Mayor, says council members, general public. Um, as you can see, we've got a short power presentation, but there's a little bit of history behind this. Uh, so as we go ahead to the...
Next one.
So, um, first off, we need to conduct a public hearing to consider the approval for the adoption for the Modesto Sub Basin Sustainability Plan. Now, the STRGBA, which is a group that has a very long title, that is a part of the group that, uh, all the cities in the area that are a part of the Modesto Sub Basin belong to. That also includes MID and OID. So you're talking City of Modesto, City of Riverbank, uh, um, uh, you'll have to bear with me here a little bit.
Dan County, OID.
Yes, it'll be, it's, it's, we'll just go ahead and go on. So the Sustainable Ground Management Act was the Act of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, this was brought into play because of the drought that we went through. Um, and as part of that development or that act, uh, public entities were empowered through the local formation of groundwater sustainability agencies. So we got two separate things here. We got a groundwater sustainability plan, which is the plan that the state come up with, and the mandates that were put into that plan. And then you have the groundwater sustainability agencies of which we are a member of, and that's the STRGBA. So, uh, as part of that, they were to develop and implement a groundwater sustainability plan. It's a fifty-year planning horizon with a twenty-year implementation period and a five-year update annually reporting. Go ahead. You're behind me. Again? Okay. So the, the Management Act of two thousand and fourteen basically says we had to investigate and determine the sustainable yields of the groundwater basin and collect pertinent groundwater monitoring, water level, water quality data, identify and implement projects and management actions, including enforcement. Again? So the GSA formation deadline was set for June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Now, keep in mind, we've been part of the, the City of Riverbank has been, been part of the STRGBA since nineteen ninety-six, when it was originally formed. The main reason why the group pulled together was to go after federal dollars in order to be able to do, uh, our monitoring and reporting that were being required and to do the early, uh, regional plans. So the GSA, GSP adoption deadline is, is January thirty-first, twenty-twenty, which for the, what's considered a critical condition of overdraft. January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two for high and medium priorities. Our basin is considered critically overdrafted. Okay, so that's the reason why we're on the, the sooner track. So, and one of the things that's very important to keep in mind here, if any of the deadlines are missed, or if the DWR determines that the plan is not adequate, the State Water Resource Control Board will interfere or intervene with enforcement. And that's the mayor's key point about them coming over and wanting to take over our water. Next one, there you go. So, resource areas of concern obviously are the chronic lowering of groundwater levels, indicating a significant or unreasonable depletion of the supply, uh, significant and unreasonable reduction, uh, significant and unreasonable seawater intrusion. Of course, that doesn't apply to us, but it does apply to people along the coast, which means it's part of the groundwater sustainability plan. Uh, significant and unreasonable degraded water quality, significant and unreasonable land subsidence. And what I mean by that is that if you pump enough water out of the ground, you cause a gap between the water level and the ground, and you'll actually start the ground sinking. And there has been areas within the valley that's already have that issue. Go ahead, next one. So this is kind of a, it's, oh, actually it looks pretty good. You can see it fairly well. It's a, the management criteria when we're looking at this and how we're gonna go about it, where it's looking at current conditions and then try to come up with a measurable objective. Inter-milestones that'll, that's set by the plan and a margin of operational flexibility, and then come up with a minimum threshold and also be able to measure undesirable results, which is the end result. So we have the ability to predict how much water we're currently taking out of our basin and how much water we're currently getting back in our basin to try to come to some type of, of equalization. That would be the alternate, or the, the ultimate goal. Go ahead. So just a quick here, so you're looking at the adaptive management where we're looking to evaluate and learn. We're plan and do and adjust as we go along. This plan and this sustainability agency is in for the long haul. This is something that's not gonna occur in the next year or two. This is something that they're looking for on a fifty, fifty-year horizon, event horizon. So as we move forward, it's gonna be ever-changing. This is gonna be the, the sustainability agency and part of the plan that we put together as the agency is gonna be a living document, which means that it will have to be addressed from time to time and, and taken a look at. Next one. So this kind of, this just kind of shows you the Stanislaus County groundwater basins where you have the, the separate basins and where you have Eastern San Joaquin and Turlock and, and along those other lines there. And, uh, the next slide, go ahead. Will show you the different, uh, county water agencies that are involved with all of this and the STRGBA. And also, go ahead, next one. So as you can see, this is actually the Modesto Sub Basin with, the, the map itself shows the, the sub basin and then a breakout of the areas. And as you can see, that red area up in the, about the mid-center is actually the Riverbank area. And it's broken down by City of Modesto, it's broken down by the county, OID, MID, uh, City of Houston, and so on and so forth. So, so everybody that is within the STRGBA is part of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, which means somewhere down the line, there's gonna be some type of agreement, uh, whether it be, uh, some type of, of resolution or some type of MOA or whatever memorandum of, of understanding or something between all the agencies involved on how this thing will proceed. Go ahead. So as a summary for the GSA formation and GSP preparation, the Modesto Groundwater Sub Basin Basin-wide GSA and the Basin-wide GSP, the Inter-County Cooperation Agreement, the Stanislaus and Twalome Rivers Groundwater Association GSA, and then you'll see that there also is a link there for the website for the STRGBA. And here is the slide I probably should have went with first. Stanislaus and Twalome Rivers Groundwater Basin Association includes the City of Modesto, OID Irrigation District, the City of Oakdale, Modesto Irrigation District, City of Riverbank, Stanislaus County, the City of Waterford, and a very small area of Twalome County. A very small area, but they are participating within our group. So staff will recommend a couple of things. Go ahead, next one. One, we want to conduct a public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. Consider approval and adoption of the Modesto Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And I know that you didn't get the plan in your packet. I did however send a link because I didn't want to have to sit down and print you up a book to read. So, uh, so we're doing that. And if the general public is interested in the plan, they can basically Google STRGBA and go to their website and you will be able to pull it up and read to your heart content. Now, this plan that we're asking you to approve and adopt the resolution regarding the Modesto Groundwater Sustainability Plan, the group or the agency, the STRGBA, has been working very hard on for basically the last five years, but very much for the last two. So this is a, a accumulation of a, a lot of work by a lot of agencies. And, uh, the, everybody participates. However, we have been able to do all this without much funding from any of the agencies because we've been very successful as a group in securing federal dollars in order to pay for this. At the tune, the last grant to finish, finally gonna finish up this plan is about a million and a half dollars. Uh, you're welcome to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, comments from the council?
Uh, no questions, just a quick comment though, uh, Michael. So I, I think it's great that we have this plan coming forward. I mean, I, I think we probably just get maybe one chance trying to avoid depleting, you know, the basin and what that would look like if we had not taken any kind of action. Uh, but no, thank you, thank you, Michael, for, uh, being very responsive to all the questions I had as I was kind of digging through these chapters and stuff like that. So appreciate. Uh, glad we have somebody like you, um, kind of digging through this and we can bounce, uh, questions and stuff like that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question about your graph, the management plan.
Mm-hmm.
This is something that we'll be continuously doing all the time, right? And that's how we get to answer the, the plans, questions and format and so forth as we go forward, right?
That's correct. I mean, like I said, this, this, this plan will be a living document, right? Because there's still some unknowns that we're gonna have to figure out as basically as to how to quantify the amount of water underneath us. They have came up with some very good, uh, uh, software in order to try to do that, but it's still in the, in the infant phase as we go forward. Now, I can tell you this much. I've been working in this valley, in this area, with this water for close to forty years. Right? And I can tell you that without a doubt, the City of Riverbank's system sits much, much, in a much better position than most of the other cities because of our quality of water and the fact that we have that river sitting right next to us, right? We have a water source that even if, in the summertime when it's, you know, six, eight inches deep, you've still got a amount, a, a large amount of water that's moving underground. So when we stick straws in the ground, when we're pulling out, it doesn't cause our water levels to drop. Our water levels are staying, are, are staying pretty, are maintaining a pretty level extent. And we do monitor all of our wells for any type of, basically when we go in and sound them, we check them at static state. We fire them up, crank them up as high as it goes, see how much drop we get, measure that, and then shut them off and see how long it takes that water to recover. And we keep track of that, have been keeping track of that, uh, for the last over ten years since I've been here. So we were able to very, to watch our water very closely.
Hey, Michael, I just got a couple of words to say. Um, we've got climate change. Climate change means in the long run, if they continue, there's gonna be changes in the earth. So I think this plan is just really great because we don't know what the future holds. Riverbank's in good shape right now, but we don't know what the future is totally bringing to us. And if we work together and say one city is lacking enough water, maybe we can help them out or vice versa because we're not sure what the future's gonna be with these climate changes. So I applaud you for what you've done with it.
Thank you. And, and I think one of the things that, that is a, a big point and we need to keep track of, and the mayor's been harping on this for quite some time, is that we need to keep control. We need to make sure that DWR or the State Water Resource Board don't come in and try to control our water because when that starts, that's when we'll start having the issues.
Just a quick one. Uh, Michael, we've been managing and, and surveying our basin since the early nineties. That's nineteen ninety, um, well before the state decided to, uh, start dictating that everybody does it uh, their way, even though it may not be the completely correct way. That's why we've been able to get the federal funding because we did it long before anybody else. else, and we paved the way. The other comment I'd just like to also make is that we're considered critically overdrafted because we have basins around us that are overdrafted, therefore, we're put in the same boat as they, even though we are not even close. And, and if we, the council remembers the, the report we received, this, this triggered me, was it the last meeting about our water sustainability, or was that two meetings ago? Two meetings ago, our water sustainability, that we can sustain quite easily a five-year drought with no degradation of our water level, nor our water quality, which means that, that we're doing it, we're managing correctly. Now, my goal is to make sure that we can do, bless you, have a, a stormwater containment system that will replenish our aquifer, and if we have one foot of rain a year, which is our average, and our acre, we could have close to four thousand acre-feet of water going back into our basin, as well as a tertiary system that we have, that we can pump our processed wastewater either into that system or use it for agriculture, so we're protecting what we have. So the way we're moving forward with our, our development and our use of the water is to further the sustainability. So that's how we, we, we plan, and we don't do it for the next year. We make sure that it's, this is generational, that this can be sustained, you know, for the next hundred years. So I want to thank you for that. So then, before I open it up for public comment, not public comment, public hearing, are there any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing, I open it for public hearing. This is important for everybody. Okay.
There's no one, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak, and we did not receive any written comments.
Thank you very much. Well, on that note, I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it to the council for consideration.
I'd like to make a motion that we take item ten point two as so stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, a second on item ten point two.
Council members, Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Michael.
One quick comment, Mayor.
Yes.
We did this this evening, City of Modesto will do it this evening, OID did this today at their board meeting, and the other irrigation district, Modesto, will do this next week, right, with the, to make sure that we get into that January thirty-one deadline.
Okay. And, and Waterford's taking theirs up too?
Yes.
Thank you. Want to move on to public hearing, item ten point three, a resolution amending the permanent local housing allocation, PLHA Formula Allocating Plan, application plan.
Thank you, Mayor. As Maricela comes up, I'll just share with you that you actually did this about a year ago, and then we've made some changes and spent, or allocated some money, and we realized we need to amend the plan, and so Maricela has worked the state, and will explain.
So in twenty seventeen, SB two was adopted, and it created a funding source for local agencies in order to address the affordable housing issue that we have throughout the state of California. The Department of Housing and Community Development was tasked with preparing and implementing a program that would be able to streamline the affordability and the ability for local agencies to provide funding for affordable housing development. At that time, there wasn't a lot of clear expectations from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and so we applied for the program. It was a five-year plan that we developed, and it included funding for the Ward Villas development that will be located off of Ward Avenue. We were still in negotiations with the developer at that point in time, and after we negotiated and we saw the additional information from the granting agency as to where the funds could be allocated towards, we decided to agree to reallocate three years of the five-year plan to the Ward Villas community. And so tonight's action will give us the ability to go ahead and allocate the additional two years of funding towards this project, and it would continue to provide us two years' worth of funding thereafter in order to con- continue our projects for transitional housing, housing rehab, and any other affordable housing projects that we may have throughout the City of Riverbank. We have the, the ability to continue making amendments towards those second years, those two years, should the city council have another project that comes before us that would merit allocating funds. So I'm available for any questions you may have.
Question, comment? I just want to say, the Ward project is already started, and it's turning dirt now. They should be constructing a little bit by the end of first quarter next year, and housing should be occupied there, shortly thereafter, within six months. So I, I know I haven't opened it up for a public hearing yet, but I think you have done a superb job, and us, as a city council, and our vision of how to apply the limited funds that we have for, towards affordable housing in such a tune that we got two million from the state because of our vision, and then above, beyond that, the counties, have more, have more, which is good, because we do have a plan, and we're a city that doesn't shy away from affordable housing, where other communities may question the, the logic for affordable housing, but we want all affordabilities. So thank you very much for your leadership on this. With that, this is a public hearing, I open this up for a public comment, hearing. I see no public comment.
No, there is no one wishing to speak, and we did not receive any written comments.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item ten point three.
And I'll second.
You're fine. Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez?
Um, yes, abstain then. Okay, so I might have a conflict of interest with this, so I will abstain from voting. A potential conflict of interest at this point.
All right.
Council members, Campbell?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, new business. Item eleven point one. Boy, this goes on forever, this meeting. Presentation of the Solid Waste Rate Study Prepared by Bortle Wells Associates, and Request to Establish the Public Hearing Date for the Adoption of the Proposed Solid Waste Rate.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, I apologize for interrupting you, I think we skipped ten point four.
I did. I was thinking I could be done with the public hearing by seven o'clock. I could.
I'll make it quick, I promise.
Okay, let's go back to public hearing, sorry. Item ten point four, Resolution Adopting the City of Riverbank Misuse High Density Residential Integrated with Public Transportation and Retail Uses and Affordable Housing Fee Program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and, and I would like to point out that I stole, Don and I stole your template for PowerPoint, because I can't create my own. So that's why it's all pretty. But I'm going to move through this fairly quickly, because I think that, I know the council, and I hope the public, has read the report and the associated proposed fee information. And I really think that, although I'm going to verbalize the concept, that if you want to understand the detail of it, it's important to read the documentation, but essentially here is what is being proposed. One of the, I'm sorry, Annabelle, we can go to the next slide. So one of the key priorities that council has said to me pretty much non-stop for the last number of years, has, since annexation, has been, what can we do to jumpstart housing and commercial growth within the Crossroads West Pacific Plan area, within other areas that are annexed within the city currently? In other words, we have land that's currently in city limits, and what can we do to really accelerate that growth? Because we have, we know we have needs in terms of housing, and we know we have needs in terms of retail, and so, as you can see, there's, there's been a lot of emphasis placed over the years on, on those. So there's a lot of different strategies. In speaking with many developers, one of the things that you hear as a city manager pretty much consistently, over, over my many, many years doing this, is that fees can become, are sometimes, and many times, one of the key components that slow down projects, because, you know, they, our fee schedules are designed to recover what we view as the cost for infrastructure improvements, and those are expensive. And so, so many times, that can be difficult. In addition to which, our fee program is not so nuanced, really, to have fee levels that, that acknowledge a really neat mixed-use project. We simply just don't have very many, if any. And by mixed-use, when I'm, I'm going to use that term many times through this presentation, and what I mean specifically by that is that you have dense housing opportunities with significant retail opportunities intermingled, ideally on the same site. So the key components of that is to encourage walkability, we want those to be near public transit, we want it to be near a variety of commercial services, and we want to try to spur large-scale significant retail to help grow our tax base. It's, it's a, it's a, our, our retail within the City of Riverbank is a critically important component to providing general fund services, and so it's super important that we continue to invest in that, because as the mayor can attest, and, and, and every council member that's been on the city council for any, any time more than a month, knows that we get a very, very small allocation of property tax, so sales tax is a really important component to providing core services. So in order to, and I'm sorry that this is a little bit small, but I'll, 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 I'll read it so that it's very clear. What we did was we created a fee program that reduce, that, that allows projects that meet these very specific criteria to pay twelve percent of what they would otherwise pay in our system development fees to support and incentivize what we view as really neat and needed high-density housing, in addition to what we'd like, I'm going to get into it in a minute, but what we view as sales tax transformational type of projects. So in order to qualify for this fee program, which is in your packet, you have to meet three of the four following conditions, any three of them. High qual, uh, high-density residential project that is either horizontally or vertically integrated with at least one hundred and sixty thousand square feet or more of retail, dining, commercial, entertainment, or hospitality uses, built as part of the same property or project. So that's one. Two, is located within a property that's designated mixed-use by the general plan, zoning, or specific plan. Three, is located within a half mile of a major transit stop, or within a half, excuse me, a quarter mile of a bus stop on a major bus route with bus service during the morning and afternoon peak commute periods. Four, is located within a quarter mile of a neighborhood commercial center, district, or property containing not less than one hundred and sixty thousand square feet of commercial uses. And, and if you'd like to read, there's a little bit more language within the actual attachment to the resolution, and so I'd encourage you to read that if you haven't, but those, that's the summary of the four qualifying criteria. Okay, we can go to the next one? And I promise this is almost over. If qualifications are met, they qualify for fee levels set at twelve percent of the current HDR or commercial fees. There are procedures within the, the fee program for if the commercial is built before or after the residential. In other words, the preference, obviously, for the city from a sales tax generation standpoint is that the commercial is built first, and then the residential is built, so you start to realize that sales tax increase. However, it can be done the other way around, it, and the, the ordinance has some directions for how that's done if, if residential happens to be built first. And then it's very important to, to note that the, the, the fee is only applicable to the high-density residential, and only the first one hundred and sixty thousand square feet of retail space. And the reason for that is that there's centered, one of the things in the, in the ordinance is that it makes it very clear, there's some synergistic benefits with that first one hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Once you get beyond that, there's still added benefit to the project, but a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, just so folks understand, are going to generally be your anchor, big deal tenants. They're going to be the ones that move the needle. I'm not going to mention the names of those tenants, but you can imagine who they are. They, they have the largest stores and the most customers, and so there are the types of, of sales tax producers that you really want in your, in your system. We can move on to the next one. So the implications of this are expanded opportunities for unique mixed-use development near tomb, excuse me, near term, growth in retail sales tax base, facilitation of a true high-density housing integrated in a commercial development. As I mentioned, I'm not aware, I could be wrong, but I'm not aware of any project that ha, that would meet these, this specific criteria in our region. There may be something close in Manteca, and there certainly is projects in Pleasanton and Livermore that are probably pretty close, but at least around us, this will be a cutting-edge type of project, if we're able to attract it. Uh, we can move on. I will mention that the discussion certainly would not be complete unless there was, unless I acknowledged that, obviously, if you're charging less than your total fees in your system development fund, you, you will result, it will result in what otherwise would be less funding in that, in those buckets of money. So in, in going through this with Maricela and working through this with the city attorney, one of the recommendations we have is that we will come back, if this is approved, with a fiscal strategy to backfill any deficits from increase, from the increase in project sales tax. As I mentioned, a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of retail is a significant amount of sales tax increase to, to your general fund, and so whatever short-term loss that you may receive in your system development fee will be able to be backfilled by this general fund for some, all of the models that we've run based on some of these square footages indicate a four-to-five-year period where you would essentially pay all of that back, and then everything moving forward is, is new revenue you wouldn't have had otherwise. But there's a variety of ways that, that we're going to suggest that, that you could handle that. And then we can move on? Oh, and at some point, we should reevaluate the SDF program, but we do that routinely. So I'm going to just close with this thought. I'm acknowledging that this is a bold and aggressive program, but the direction from the city council with regard, especially to our annexed properties that are sort of slowly moving along, was to be bold and aggressive and really move the needle. We believe that this program puts the city in a really good position to get the best tenants and to get them moving now versus whenever the next market fluctuation is. So we feel pretty strongly about it, and, and I would, I, I, there is some risk involved, certainly, in any decision-making along these lines, but I think that one of the things we've proven in Riverbank, whether it be in Crossroads currently, whether it be Galaxy Theater, whether it be the ammo plant, is that we have typically taken calculated risks and received significant reward as a result of it. So that's all I'll end with, and happy to answer any detail that you'd like to share.
Any questions before I open it to public hearing?
I'll just make a quick comment. So Sean, you're right, you're at, this is definitely risky. I don't think this council's ever been shy, shied away from risk, as long as it kind of pencils out, short-term or long-term. Like you've mentioned, we took the risk with Galaxy Theaters, we took the risk with Crossroads. And I think there is a way to kind of collect those fees on the back end. So, I think, I think we've kind of covered all our bases. And if we're, if, I mean, 12% on the first 1,600 and if the goal is to collect retail sales tax on something the size, that size, I think, I think it's do, I think it's definitely doable. I see it penciling out and I think it's definitely a way to jumpstart, jumpstart that Crossroads West area. So, I'm for it.
I'd, I'm glad that we're taking this bold move. One of the things that is painful for me is watching it slowly evolve and this will make it aggressively evolve. And in that way, if you have a high-quality jumpstart, that momentum will carry through quickly and there may be other projects near us that may become a threat if we do not take this bold move.
And Mayor, I apologize for jumping in, but I just want to make one more really important comment. This is not related necessarily to any specific project in Riverbank. This is a citywide program. So, if, maybe it's Crossroads West, maybe it's the East Side Development, maybe it's the properties that are across the street from Galaxy, any of those would, would have the opportunity and meet the criteria to qualify for this program. And I think that generally, we would be thrilled to have a really neat project in any of those locations.
I'd just say a few words. I agree with everything the mayor and the vice mayor have said, Sean. And I was around when the Galaxy Theater came and there was a lot of havoc because they gave similar things that we're talking about and they took the chance. What happened? We've got the best theater in many counties and matter of fact, it's one of, it's the best theater in their chain. I happen to know the manager and the owner and they tell me this all the time. So, we have to take some of these risks sometimes because I think in the long run, we'll get more than our money back and it'll benefit the city and the county and the area a lot better and make Riverbank a better place.
I do want to just note that the qualifications point to us being mindful of different populations and of the different resources that people need as well. So, so those are important qualifications despite the risk.
And I'd also mention one other thing, that there's language in here that talks about affordable housing. And I want to make sure that we understand that we up here have typically viewed affordable housing in a very narrow mindset, which is typically to us subsidized housing. And I think that it's important that moving forward, we really look at affordable by-design housing, which essentially means apartments, smaller-scale market projects, because not everybody can afford a house, not everybody can afford to rent a house, but many people can afford to rent an apartment or a smaller dwelling unit. So, okay, that's it. No more from me.
I just want to say that we are the city of action and I believe that we are very forward-thinking and so I'm agreement with doing whatever we can to move our strategic plans forward. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I open this for public comment.
There is no one wishing to speak and we did not receive any written comments on this item.
You know, this is significant. You can make a comment saying, yeah, go for it. Okay, see, yes, go ahead.
I'll have to comment, Mayor. Dave White, opportunity stands last. All I want to say is thank you for being forward-thinking and taking the lead in development. That's what cities should do and you guys are taking the lead and you've been really the model for the whole county and I really appreciate that. If you're trying to attract business, you're trying to attract new investment, you have to have a place for them to go and Riverbank understands that. So, I just wanted to thank, say thank you.
Corinne Whitlow, I feel motivated to speak as well. These are the things that did really draw me to Riverbank. I am newer to Riverbank, I've only been here for about three years, but this forward-thinking and taking these risks and these type of opportunities is definitely one reason why I'm here. So, I do appreciate that.
Thank you. We had some public comments on it. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing before I ask for it to go to consideration for the, one of the things that Mr. White just mentioned is correct and a lot of the cities are not very liking Riverbank because they said if you didn't like Riverbank or if you didn't like, the reports like Riverbank, you'd be doing so much better and they hate that. So, and I made that a public comment. So, I bring this back for consideration for the council.
I'll make a motion to approve item 10.4.
I have a motion to approve 10.4 and a lot of others wanting to second it. May I have a roll call vote please?
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez, yes. Vice Mayor O'Dea.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, new business and the order I'm going to take it is 11-1 and then I'm going to go to 11-3 before I jump back. Okay? I won't go out of turn, I'll just go out of my turn. Item 11-1, presentation of the solid waste rate study prepared by Bartlewell Associates and request to establish the public hearing date for the adoption of the proposed solid waste rates on Tuesday, February 22, 2022.
Thank you, Mayor. Our assistant city manager, Maricela Garcia, has worked on this project for a while now and she's, I think we also have consultants, right?
Yes. So, tonight, we are pleased to present to you the results of the rate study that has been prepared in order to initiate the Proposition 218 process for increased solid waste rates based on the new legislation that has been adopted by the state of California, SB 1383 and that will be implemented as of January 1st. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to present our representative from Bartlewell's Associate, Eric Helgason, who will be going through a PowerPoint presentation and giving you their determination of the proposed rates by Gilton Solid Waste.
Thank you, Maricela. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Eric Helgason and I worked on this project with, for Bartlewell Associates. And so, I'll just get into it. The objectives of the study, and I apologize, I can't see on mine, is the, is the presentation up or, or should I share my screen? Maybe I'll, I can share, I think it's giving me the option. All right, well, I will continue with this, I apologize. Oh, what was that?
I can share mine.
Oh, oh, perfect, okay. I, and I can share mine if, if it's better. But yes, so, next slide, please. So, our, our objectives are to make sure the rates are financially sound and since the, the solid waste is an enterprise, it's dependent on the user fees and rates to support the, the operations, so it's important that the rates are sufficient. And secondly, the rates need to comply with relevant legislation, the most prominent being Prop 218 and, which is why we're requesting that the authorization to send out 218 notices for the proposed rates. And the 218 process is sending out of the notice a 45-day period where customers have the opportunity to submit a written protest. And then at the, at the end of that 45-day period, a public hearing, which got definitely a lot of practice performing those this evening. And, and the, and the public hearing, if there isn't a majority protest of customers, then the council will have the discretion to adopt the, the rates. Next slide, please. So, Gilton has been providing service for over 40 years. The, the current rates that are being charged for solid waste service have been in effect since 2018. With the passage of SB 1383, the, the cost to comply with that, that new legislation will be significant and Gilton will be incurring about 775,000 in additional vehicle and labor costs as well as development of a material recovery facility, which will be a regional facility and those costs will be spread around all its customers, but the cost of that facility is projected to be 8.76 million dollars. Next slide, please. So, the proposed rates in 2022, the, the increase that is proposed in 2022 will reflect the, the cost of complying with SB 1383. And then after that, the, we're proposing inflationary increases in the years 2023 through 2026. And those increases will be tied to the CPI and reflect the increase in cost to continue to perform solid waste operations. In the first year, the proposed rate increase for residential customers will be $11.85. Next slide, please. And so, the, the following slides show the, the increases to each customer class depending on their level of service. For cart customers receiving, with one cart, they'll be, charge that 11.85 and then that will, it'll be, it'll increase if there are additional carts. Next slide, please. And the, the same 11.85 increase will also apply to non-residential can, can customers as well. And then, next slide, please. And finally, commercial customers with, with bins will pay proportion, proportionally to the, the, the volume and the frequency of their, of their collection. Next slide, please. So, the, the, the rate increase, how, how will the rate increase compare to neighboring agencies? Currently, your rates are about tied for, for the lowest and they'll, they'll still be in the lower middle of the pack. And, but with, with inflation and, and new regulation, it's likely that, that other cities will be seeing, on the low end, will be seeing their rates increase as well.
At this point, can I interrupt just for a second? Some of those are not updated and we need an updated one when we do it for, going out for the 218. For example, Waterford and Houston have already increased their fees to over $35 each.
Correct, yeah. You'll notice there's a little blue icon right above the Houston, which currently shows 23.41. Their newly adopted rate is $35.02.
And then Waterford.
And then Waterford, we will be, we will update this graph to.
Okay, thank you, because we, we're still near the bottom.
Correct.
Okay, I, I will make sure to incorporate those changes. I apologize, I, I performed the survey based on the websites and I was not aware. So, thank you and I will make sure that those reflect the, the actual charges. So, the next steps for the process will be sending out the, the 218 notices, the 45-day notice period and then holding a public hearing, which if approved to send out the notices, today would, the public hearing would be likely on the, the 22nd of February of 2022. And then once the, the rates are adopted, the targeted implementation is March 1st, I believe. So, if that concludes the, the presentation and I'm available for questions.
So, Mayor and City Council, I do want to add that the study was based off of financial data that was received from Gilton Solid Waste and we want to thank all of the staff that's here and all of the staff that helped us through the process as well in answering questions specific to that financial data that was reviewed by Bartlewell's Associates. So, we do want to give you firm confidence that the study did review all of that financial data. We did receive all of the necessary information from Gilton Solid Waste in order to bring forward this final draft to you, which gives us the confidence that the $11.85 rate that is being requested as an increase in order to mitigate the impacts of SB 1383 is equitable for our Riverbank residents.
Thank you. Before I put it out to the public, is there any comments?
I got a question, Mayor. So, I'd say throw a wrench in the whole report or anything like that, but I do like that we're on the lower end of the rates and everything and I was kind of, when I was digging through the reports and stuff like that, I would notice that some, some cities were weekly, some were bi-weekly. So, just because I'm curious and stuff, what, what would it look like if Riverbank went to say bi-weekly? Is that possible? What would that look like? Just, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, it's not something that we've evaluated in terms of moving, transitioning our service to a bi-weekly pickup.
Right.
You're thinking every other week or twice a week?
Every other week.
Every other week. A lot of times that, I believe Gilton did that once before and it was a backlog on, on garbage being picked up.
Additional service costs.
And, right, and, and you had canned waste into your green waste.
Yeah, and you, you might want to consider that with a bi-weekly pickup, it most likely would necessitate many residents to obtain a third tote in order to be able to compensate for that pickup that's no longer happening twice a week, a month. So, it might, not being such a big benefit as we would think.
And Tracy, and then your vehicles would have to, because they would fill up faster, would have to do more frequent trips going back.
And Tracy, maybe you can just address one other thing that I think is important is in those, in a bi-weekly scenario, there's a, if, like, say for example, I, I have, I have a wife and two kids and we fill up our trash can by like day five. And so, if I call day, day five in a 14-day period under that scenario after like, you know, your first freebie that you give me or whatever it is, there's a service charge that Gilton assesses an individual customer or, or I guess we assess an individual customer. If I call for that second pickup and I'm, assuming we're in a bi-weekly thing and I just can't wait any longer, I need my trash dumped. How much does that cost?
Fifteen.
Yeah, that sounds right, okay.
Awesome. So, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to turn over every stone, making sure we're asking all the questions and stuff like that. So, appreciate the clarification. I just hate the unfunded mandate, right? And we got to cover and we got to do it. So, I just want to make sure that we're, we're covering all our bases and getting the rates as low as possible for our residents. Thank you.
And I had a question, concern about our senior citizens, always thinking of them and, you know, and our, you know, increases of cost of our, our utilities to them. So, do we have anything in our plan for that or low-income, disabled?
So, we currently all re, the first program that we had established for assistance with utilities was our garbage rate service. So, we do have a service plan that is for our senior citizens. They do already receive a discount. Now, the city council has the ability to revisit what that current discount is. I would suggest that we do that after the fact. The intent of the increase for the $11.85 is so that Gilton has the ability to move forward with the compliance of SB 1383. So, we don't want to necessarily look at a decrease or add a subsidy in order to cover that portion of it. We would look at the base rate that we're currently charging and if council would like to allocate additional funds towards a program such as that, then we would have the ability to do so.
Okay, one more question. So, it's my understanding that there are, one, maybe two cities in the county that have gone with the extra can? So, did we take a look at that as far as, you know, what kind of additional cost it would mean for us so that we are making the right decision in going with the increase?
Yes, so during one of the public meetings that Gilton was present at and that we, they discussed the potential rate increase, it looked like it would be about an additional $20 per month versus the 11.85 in order to go to that third tote.
Just want to make sure that we mention that so people understand, you know, we did take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I'm going to restate so the public knows that this came about because of a bill that was passed in the last election back in November, I believe it was 2020. And I was very pleased to see how Gilton got together with us. I attended one of your first Zoom, Zoom programs in January last year and I was impressed with what you guys were doing. I think it's been a pleasure for us to work together with you. This is the way businesses ought to work, with the cities and I'm pleased that you've gone around to the other cities and I applaud everything that you've done because I know that you've really been over backwards to keep the rates as low as you can and still be able to stay in business. So, thank you.
Yes, on behalf of Gilton, we do appreciate that because we've been, this is all we've done, right ladies, for the past 12 months.
done, right ladies, for the past twelve months, so we've taken it very seriously. So thank you, we appreciate that.
Got one more question for you guys. So I was watching the board of supervisor meeting, and they mentioned that there are residents that, some residents that are excluded from this mandate. How, how did that come about?
Well, depending on low population areas, that's, was determined by the state as well and by Cal Recycle. There were, I, I don't have the, the criteria right now to tell you, but there's certain criteria that if there's, you know, low population, I think it was high elevation and low population, those folks, but in general, the goal of SB thirteen eighty-three was for residents, and all residents have to have that, that green or that organics can.
Thank you.
That's part of the mandate.
And while they are exempt, they, Gilton still has to meet that seventy-five percent reduction. That doesn't mean that we get a subsidy or, or a slideback because of the number, I think it's number of residents per square mile. There's some, okay? I read that in your report. The other thing I want to thank Gilton on is working with Riverbank Organics and getting rid of some of your ways that we can use, that they can use, to, to recycle and put back into, to organics and fertilizers. And I know you're looking for ways to, you have to, we have to do all of our composting, and so we're looking for ways to use that without flooding the, the whole city with too few of, of compost.
Absolutely, yeah. Those, those targets by the state are pretty high, as we've discussed with Sean, much to his dismay.
Almost fell out of my seat when they said how much compost they were going to bring. I was like, where am we supposed to put it?
Okay, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak?
There is no one on Zoom wishing to speak, and we did not receive any written comments on this item.
Very good. So I bring it back to the council to consider setting a public hearing date. Oh, first off, it's to start the two eighteen process. Secondly, it is to, if the two eighteen process is less than fifty percent for against, to establish a public hearing date of twenty-two February twenty twenty-two. Anyone want to tackle that one? I will, I will do that then. My motion that we start the two eighteen process for the rate study to consider establishing a public hearing date for the adoption of the proposed solid waste rate, if appropriate, on Tuesday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, and a second on eleven, one.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor O'Dea.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, I'm going to eleven, three. A resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Riverbank and Opportunity Stanislas for fiscal years twenty twenty-one slash twenty-two through twenty-five, plan twenty-six for economic development and workforce strategies.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As council is aware, Opportunity Stanislas has been a partner with the City of Riverbank for many, many years, since its formation, actually. And the Opportunity Stanislas has also taken the lead regionally on a number of economic development initiatives, and has partnered with the city on a variety of different projects over the years, whether it be our, our small business relief loan program during COVID, whether it be projects at the Riverbank Industrial Complex, and a variety of other site-selecting referrals that we get regularly from them. Opportunity Stanislas also helped recently with a, a training session put on by their Small Business Development Center for the, the federal assistance that was available during the pandemic. And so, more recently, Opportunity Stanislas has undertaken a strategic plan update. Oh, I'm so sorry, is this?
This is wrong.
Oh, okay. That's the national opioid one. More recently, the Opportunity Stanislas has taken, undertaken a strategic plan update, which has enhanced, added, and shifted priorities for the organization, and Dave can speak to that here in just a moment. The specific tasks and services outlined in the MOU are located within your staff report. I won't go through each of those, but they relate to some of the current services that we receive and some expanded services that Opportunity Stanislas hopes to tackle in this upcoming work plan. The, a number of other, of other Stanislas County jurisdictions have already approved this MOU and, and associated cost increase. To that point, due in part to the expanded services being provided under this MOU, Opportunity Stanislas is requesting an increase in contribution. Or currently and over the past number of years, the City of Riverbank has paid ten thousand dollars on a yearly basis under prior MOUs, and the request from Opportunity Stanislas under this MOU and moving forward is a contribution by the City of Riverbank at twenty-five thousand dollar level. Obviously, that's a net increase of fifteen thousand, and it would be a general fund obligation. So I would like to turn it over if it's okay with you, Mr. White. Dave White is the CEO of Opportunity Stanislas, and if you would like to come up and maybe just say a few words about the work program, that might, and that'll conclude our report.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, it's great to be here tonight and to be in this wonderful city. I live not too far from here, so I, I'm a regular shopper at Crossroads and a regular partaker of your wonderful restaurants. But I will just say this, first and foremost, thank you for your leadership and for your support and your partnership. It's been a wonderful experience for me. I've been now, I've been here now eight years. When I came here, we were the alliance, and one of the things that we did in twenty sixteen is we separated from the county to, because one of the issues that we had at the time is we didn't have a lot of private sector participation in the organization. By so doing, we created a brand-new organization called Opportunity Stanislas. We also moved out of the city-county building, and as a result, we have over one hundred and thirty private investors in the organization. And this new campaign, our plans go for five years, and you can't have a plan go on forever because economic, economics change and circumstances change. And we certainly, coming out of a global pandemic, it's really created quite a new paradigm for doing business and, and operating. You've, you've seen that yourself. So we started our process back in, we were going to start it in February twenty twenty. I just didn't feel the timing was right. I don't know if it was serendipity or divine intervention, but I'm so glad we didn't try to start a new plan in February twenty twenty. That would have been interesting. But we started in twenty twenty-one, February. We were able to get a federal grant to support the strategic planning operation. We hired our consulting friends from Strategic Solutions. They helped us with our last campaign. Fred Michelson is here with me today. Fred and his team have years and years of economic development experience all around the country. In fact, Fred himself was the chairman of the Board of the Orange County Business Council, which is our counterpart in Orange County. So they know their stuff. And one of the first things they do when they do economic development plans is they interview a number of people, private interviews, I'm not in the room, and they ask them about Opportunity Stanislas. What do you think about them? What do you think needs to be the focus going forward in the next five years? And what was very interesting, we did ninety-seven interviews. Eighty percent of the respondents told them that they had received direct ROI from our organization. And these were businesses and multiple investors from the organization. They, they've acknowledged that that is the highest they've ever seen in all their years of doing economic development plans throughout the country, and they've done over a hundred plans. And so I take that as a great tribute to our staff for the work that we've done. We, one of our most important areas of emphasis is to support local industry. And eighty percent of all the jobs that are created in a local economy are local in business doing well. A lot of times, you know, you get a new company that comes in, Amazon, and it's on the front page of the newspaper. Everybody gets excited about that, and, and we, we celebrate those announcements. But really, the bread and butter is you take care of home base first, and so that's one, been one of our very strong points of emphasis. And then you go after the kind of companies that are going to increase your economy, make your economy grow. I love the fact that Ametis was mentioned, they were here in the room. That's a, that, that company represents a totally different industry. That's not, that wasn't present in this county before. And so what that does is it diversifies the account, the economy, it creates new and higher-paying jobs. And if you read our case statement, I think each of you may have received a copy of that, our focus going forward in the next five years, we don't have a job goal in our next campaign, we have a company goal, and specifically going after companies that are going to diversify the economy and pay higher-than-average wages and salaries in our county. So that's an area of emphasis. Workforce, we do a lot in regard to workforce. We started Volt Institute. That was a big lift for us. It was a startup operation. We had money in our reserves, we paid for a maintenance mechanic program, we went out and received a federal grant, and I'll tell you right now, operating a, operating a training center is no easy task. It's a, it's a drain on your budget, and it's a drain on, it takes a lot of staff time to operate, but Volt Institute has been extremely successful. I know some of you were at our event on Wednesday night. We had a young lady who stood up and gave a testimonial, and she talked about how she was working at McDonald's. And she was really, she was told by her supervisor that she had no hope for a future. And then she heard about Volt Institute, and so she signed up for Volt. This is a single mom, two children, signed up, and within six months, she had really done very, very well. She had four job offers coming out of that. The job offer she chose was seventy percent more money than she was making before, a job with benefits and with a 401K plan, and she was so happy to share that. I, I can tell you, one, one company here in the industrial complex hired one of our students, and it was an individual who's from, originally from Egypt. They hired him, and we thought he was going to get a maintenance mechanic position. They actually hired him to be the assistant plant manager for the company because he had had some managerial experience. So this is the kind of impact that our programs are having on individual lives and people who live here and work here in Riverbank as well. So going forward, we're going to be expanding Volt Institute. We're doing some exciting things, including a project called Volt on the Go, which will be a mobile version of Volt that we can bring up here to the industrial complex. They can get training right after they finish their shift. We're adding, we're doing a lot of focus now on community projects. We'd love to see the Del Rio turn into something really cool and exciting down the road. I love what you said about your new projects and new ideas on your, on your plan. But the thing about community is, I, you know, I have kids, I have grandkids. I want them to stay close. And we have to have place, talent follows place, and, and income and wealth follow talent. So if we want to attract talent to our community, we have to have a good community. We have to have a, a, a Riverbank IMAX theater that is really exciting for young families. We need to have other assets like the Gallo Center for the Arts. So we are taking a very, very strong interest and focus on supporting and leading game-changer type projects like the Gallo Theater or like the Riverbank IMAX. We're purchasing a tool called Buxton. I think Sean knows about Buxton. This is a very powerful tool that will be able to tell us exactly the type of retailers, the type of industries that we can go after based on our demographics and our economic performance. So there's a lot of new things. We operate the Small Business Development Center. Last year after COVID, we were able to serve over a thousand businesses. Some of them would call us up with tears and crying on the phone because they thought they were going to lose their restaurant. Within twenty-four hours, we, on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, because of prior experience I had in Colorado, we had two fires, one year after another, in Colorado Springs, very disruptive to business. I knew what was coming. It was a tsunami. And I gathered the staff, and I said, we've got to be prepared because this is going to be very disruptive to business. And so within twenty-four hours, we had a website up with all the right information, where to go to get your PPP loan, your IDA loan, where to go to get technical assistance. And we literally, our consultants, our SBDC, SBDC consultants literally save businesses from going under. And so I'm very proud of that. I, our staff worked seventy-hour weeks during that time to help support small business. And we were very honored to be able to lead, to manage the Riverbank Grant Program to Small Business. It was a great success. Thank you for your leadership on that. I think you were one, probably the first, that, that did that. And now we're hearing from other cities, a year later, that they want to look at doing the same thing. So we're excited about the future. There's a lot of wind at our back. I'm excited about Riverbank. You guys, you really lead the effort, understanding economic development, and so it's going to be a great pleasure to work with you. And I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just have a comment. You know the Riverbank's vision. We've sat down together, we, we explained that where we're going, what we, what we need is the support and how to get those companies up and running that are coming on in, and then supporting them throughout. But we also need an honest critique on what we're doing, and maybe we're not doing it completely right. I doubt it, but, and just in case we're, we're not doing it right, we would like to have the, the critique of you. Because as we develop, as we move forward to the, to the west and the east, we need to make sure we have a balanced growth. We have a, a very robust job to housing ratio, and, and that's what we're striving to do, to make sure that for every rooftop, we have a job in the area, and that can lead later on to a higher-paying job.
Mayor, that is a wonderful statement and very wise, and I just, I, I saw a report about a month ago, and it was ranking all the counties in the Central Valley, from San Joaquin all the way down to Kern. And our county was second, listed second after San Joaquin in economic performance. We were dead last in new housing starts. That's not, that's not a recipe for success. If people who are working, taking these jobs, that they can't afford housing, then they're going to go someplace else. It's plain and simple. And so there has to be balance. You know, we don't want to give up our ag land, but we also need to have places for people to live who can fill these jobs. Right now, we have manufacturers that are pulling their hair out because they can't find people to work. You talk to any company right now, and it's, they can't find people that want to work. So we have to look at, at, we have to look at this as a holistic approach, that we need jobs, we need housing, we need quality of life, all of the above. But we have to do it in a balanced, measured way. And, and so I, again, I pay tribute to Riverbank because I think you see those things and you balance it out fairly well. And I will, if I find something that I can tell you that, from based on my experience, I'll be sure to do that. Thank you. Thanks.
I'd like to make a comment. First of all, Dave, you've come a long way since I was representative for a couple years. I think you did the right thing splitting away from the workforce, and I've watched you stumble at times, but I think you're really getting yourself together. And I think the things that you're doing are going to be very beneficial to this community to find jobs that some of these people can get better wages with, because part of homelessness is going to grow if we don't help these people that are right on the line, and they keep failing because the economy gets too low, is going too fast and they can't keep up with it. So I applaud you and keep doing that because I think it's very important.
Thank you, Cal.
So I'll make a quick comment. So kudos to you, Dave, to you, to your company, everything you've accomplished already. And just the last week, your, your company has already been more engaging, at least, you know, at least with me, they've, I've had two of your employees kind of reach out. We've kind of talked about the industrial complex, kind of like a networking session, rebranding the RIC, because if we're going green, it probably makes sense to kind of rebrand that whole area. Yeah, so I think you're, oh, and they kind of pointed me in the right direction for some funding for businesses on a, on a different, on a different front. Maybe we can get some electric vehicle chargers in the downtown, so I'm going to pass that information to, to the downtown bizco group, see if they're interested in that. So, yeah, I look for, I look forward to working with you, and we'll see you in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Oh, I just want to make a comment about the Vote program. I did go to the reception, and thank you for just what you're doing with the Vote program. I think that it's an asset to the community, and anyone who gets involved in that program will be more than satisfied with the new skills that they have acquired. So just thank you for creating that program and that avenue for people to look forward to, a change.
Thank you.
For the better.
Thank you, Darlene, appreciate it.
And I just want to thank you, my limited time on council so far, seeing how nimble and effective you can be with the organization. And I just want to thank you, my limited time on council so far, I've seen how nimble and effective you can be with the organization.
Well, there's a note song back from, you ever remember Bachman Turner Overdrive? Okay, that, that go, that's going back a little ways. But that was my era. You ain't seen nothing yet. Thank you.
Are there any public comment? Annabelle, do we have any public comment?
There is no one wishing to speak on Zoom and we did not receive any written comments.
Okay, I bring it back to the council for a consideration of approving the MOU.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item eleven point three.
I second.
We have a motion to approve in a second on eleven point three. Roll call, please.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oive.
Yes.
Mayor Bryan.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're going to.
One moment before we go on. I am looking forward to, um, the Chamber of Commerce for Riverbank to get involved more with opportunity Stanislav's. So, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, eleven point two, National Opioid Settlement.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, we are actually very excited about this opportunity. And, uh, coming up to the mic here is, uh, our very own Donna Kenny from Planning and Building, who is also very passionate about, um, about addressing the, the problems with opioid addiction, uh, here locally. She's actually served, um, personally and on behalf of the city on the opioid, uh.
Coalition.
What's it called?
The Opie, uh, Stanislav's County Opioid Safety Coalition.
Yeah, so we, and, and she's been doing that for a number of years. And when we saw this come up, uh, it was actually Donna that brought it to our attention that this settlement was out there. City attorneys reviewed it. Um, we've actually pre-registered just because we had to, but we'll need an approval from the city council to move to the next step. And so she's going to explain the background as well as some options that we might have for, for the funding if you choose to participate.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, as a city manager mentioned that there are national opioid settlements out there. In July of twenty twenty-one, the California Attorney General's Office announced that there would be twenty-six billion dollars in national settlements. And this is against the companies of Cardinal, McKesson, AmerisourceBergen, which are major distributors, and Janssen, which is a manufacturer and marketing. And in addition to these settlements, um, they are not to reintroduce opioids for ten years. Next, please. Okay. Um, a little bit of background, uh, California stands to gain approximately two point two six billion dollars of these settlements. How much they get and how much Riverbank would get, um, depends on how many cities and, uh, counties sign up for it. The deadline is January second of twenty twenty-two and the city must elect to participate. You're just not automatically in the settlements. So the city manager registered us to participate December first of this year. Registering does not obligate the city. As he mentioned, we need, um, a thumbs up from you on this. Step two, uh, you have options. One is you could elect not to participate in these settlements. You could participate with direct payments and reporting obligations. Or you could participate with direct payments to Stanislav's County and no reporting obligations. So the Stanislav's County Opioid Safety Coalition, um, has been, um, around for a couple of years now. And they have many focuses, um, as to what they're doing. Education, data collection, um, they held an opioid awareness summit a couple of years ago and over seven hundred people from the surrounding areas came to it. They coordinate the disposal of unwanted medications. They supply Narcan to Riverbank. We have it in City Hall and many of our inspectors and public works folks have it in their truck. Um, for those who don't know Narcan, Narcan brings people back from the edge of death, from opioids. They also supply Detera to, uh, Riverbank, which I distribute to our, um, citizens. And what Detera is, it's a package with some, um, chemicals in it. And if you have unwanted opioids in your home, you put those in the packet, you add some warm water, you shake it up and within five minutes, um, it's ready to just be thrown in the trash. It, uh, totally, um, dissolves and, and gets rid of the opioids, neutralizes them. They also do community alerts and ads about fentanyl, which is out there right now. And in fact, we've recently heard there is a new drug that is being introduced to the fentanyl, which goes into these, um, fake pills. And it's a, um, a horse, um, it's a horse drug and a sedative. And the name escapes me right now, but unfortunately, when it's added to fentanyl and there is an overdose, it keeps the Narcan from working. So they're losing people now that they could save if this drug wasn't involved. It's mostly on the East Coast and the Midwest, but it could be moving this way. So as I mentioned, the opioid coalition, they have a lot of educational materials out there, bus stops. They're going to be, uh, showing some, um, uh, testimonials from families in small film clips like at the, um, Galaxy Theater before the movies. So, and they're educating now, they're getting the materials into high schools in the surrounding area to, uh, get people, um, aware of the situation and get them the help that they need. Next, please. One more, please. Okay, so the recommendation is to approve the proposed resolution to, um, elect to participate, um, with settlements, in the settlements with Riverbank's allocation going to the county to support the Stanislav's County Opioid Safety Coalition. The county does provide staffing for this coalition, but most of the programs that they've been, um, doing to support our citizens have been grant based. So this could provide them with a stream of income, um, and they could do a lot more with our citizens and the surrounding, um, area citizens as well. Uh, I think the only thing I skipped over is, um, in addition to that money, uh, for the settlements, there's also one point six billion dollars out there for attorney fees and two hundred million for city county attorneys that are involved in these settlements. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
I just, uh, have a comment that the, uh, fentanyl and opioids have taken too many of their veterans uh, because of their PTSD, uh, they're abusing and dying more rapidly than they ever had in the history by percentage wise. Um, I'm for anything that we can do to take the opioids out or the fentanyl. And was that, uh, uh, but that was the, the horse drug?
I think so. That, that sounds right.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. Not that I use it, but, um.
Well, the, the coalition, like, you're correct. The coalition's focus is keeping people alive until they can get into recovery.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I agree with the, what the mayor said about the veterans because the suicide rates are going up right now with veterans. But I also think this is a great program too, to get, uh, some of our young people maybe stopping them from getting it because they don't, they have no knowledge about it and sometimes they're getting this stuff and the wrong things are in and it's killing them. So way to go.
So, uh, so I think, I think we absolutely should find a way to kind of raise awareness. Uh, in the reports there on option two, can we contract this out to an organization if we were to take, take lead on it?
Yeah, if we did, if we opted to take the payments directly, we would have to come up with an opioid abatement program. Um, I believe you can contract with somebody, but I, I'd have to check into that.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe an opportunity for, opportunity to Stanislav's, just kind of, just throwing it out there.
Um, I just want to say that if we do go with, well, I would, I recommend that we do go with the, the county, um, you know, going through the county. But I just don't want Riverbank to get left out of, if we should get funding, I just don't want us to get left out. There's been so many times that Riverbank kind of like gets overlooked. And so would we have someone internally that would be the liaison between, oh, Donna, okay.
Yes, I'm on the coalition.
Okay, good, good. So just, you know, make sure.
Yes, in fact.
Hey, Riverbank, you know, so anyway, whatever you have to do.
Yeah, Donna, I think that the concern that, that Councilman Barbara Martinez is, is articulating is that Riverbank has sometimes felt, excuse me, I have sometimes felt on behalf of Riverbank that the proportionate services that we should be receiving on regional efforts maybe isn't proportionally given to us. We get somewhat less than, um, and I won't go into detail about that. But I think that what we can do is make sure that in whatever agreement that we have with the county for the services, that our allocation represents a specific amount of resources that are being put back into our, like whether it be time or programs or whatever.
It is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Understood.
Um, and yeah, I, I agree, we should opt in and, um, the real concern is, is how. So I have lots of questions, but, um, for tonight, I, I feel we should opt in.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
There is no one wishing to speak on Zoom and we did not receive any written comments.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the council for a consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in the settlement designated for opioid abatement.
I'd like to make a.
That we approve item, uh, eleven point two.
Which option?
To, um, go with the, uh, to the Uta County.
Number three.
Is your second?
Yeah, I'll second for option three.
We have a motion to approve in a second for item eleven two, option three.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Um, so are we electing how to participate in?
Excuse me, um, I think the motion, uh, in second was for option three, which would mean that we elect to pay directly to the county. Donna, just a quick question. Do you know if at this stage, we actually have to make that decision?
No.
In other word, I'm sorry, couldn't understand.
Sorry. I don't believe so and, I mean, not at this step, but then when we move forward, we, when we opt in, we have to tell them.
Yeah, so, so if, if the council would like a little more discussion on that part, we can do that later. What we really need authorization to do tonight is simply to move forward with, with involving ourselves in the settlement. I don't want to make sure I'm not stepping on any city attorney generally correct. So if you could either move forward with the motion in second, vote on that, or if the city council wanted to dive into who actually has allocated the money later, we can bring that back after we've been notified how much we're getting and how it works and all of that.
And please consider as we're moving forward and a lot of our, our initiatives, especially with the homeless, we have, uh, designated spaces that can help out in some of those areas. And that, we, uh, will be getting the county there. And we can also have the opioid or some of the other, in fact, some of it is for drug and alcohol use. Um, so, um, and the county is beginning to engage Riverbank because we're the only ones that is going, moving forward in any of our initiatives or any initiatives. Everyone else is taking a hands-off approach. So be prepared sometimes for the county to throw a lot of money your way when you don't have the opportunity to spend it within their timeframe.
So is the motion only to participate in the settlement? Is that what we're motioning on or? And then we are going to come back with the options? Is that what we're doing?
Um, I thought we were going to just go ahead and.
Go to the county.
Yeah, go to the county.
That's what, that's what three have said or two have said.
Sean said something different.
And.
Yeah, the motion on the table is that.
All right, but you want to, so.
I would like.
So yours would be a noble.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And for the mayor, yes.
Okay, motion passes four one.
Thank you.
All right, the last item, which is the last item. Uh, item eleven four, city media broadcasting, discussion and direction.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I, I just want to take one quick moment and thank Dave White and then our other member of the public for hanging out for this entire meeting through a bunch of items. And the people don't usually do that, so I appreciate it. Oh, okay, well, I don't think it's that exciting, but yeah, it is, it's exciting. Uh, just maybe not for a city council meeting. So, so, um, a couple of things. Uh, the whole point of this item is that, um, as the city council knows and has been very frustrated with, and so has staff and certainly the city clerk and Norma and, and, uh, all of us that work on, on making sure that this presentation is professional and consistent. One of the things that's been very frustrating since we've come back into the room is the inconsistency with our technology, the different broadcastings that we do all at once. And the fact that it's very difficult for us to, uh, make sure that they operate regularly without error. Um, and whether that be related to public comment, whether that be related to, to video streaming, whether it be related to, to charter. So one of the things that we just, we have done as, uh, as we come back in, in, in person is we've spoken and, uh, issued an RFP and then interviewed a number of technology firms that are putting, that have put together, uh, proposals for us on how to upgrade our equipment in this room so that it's as, as modern and professional as possible. One of the things that we've learned through that process is that trying to, to broadcast in two formats, one that's an old, uh, excuse me, one that is an aging and, and less advanced format and one that is an easily accessible and high definition format, seems to be where we're having the most problems. And it's a tremendous amount of work, of work to do both. What we think it, we think it might be better for the city council to consider investing in the future in a, in a more sophisticated, uh, and widely available format. And by that I mean YouTube and Zoom and any other online service that, that's widely available now. And not spend as much, uh, uh, of our resources on broadcasting to, through our normal cable providers on local access. We, we are aware that the vast majority of people that participate in city council meetings are typically participate online through Zoom and YouTube. That's what we've seen. In addition to that, this very large and loud piece of equipment that's sitting right behind Annabelle is, uh, part, part of it is Charter's, uh, equipment. And we are not actually allowed to fiddle with it if it doesn't work. Uh, we have to wait for them to come take care of it. So, um, uh, it has become, uh, just an issue that has been nagging for some time. And we do understand and acknowledge that there are some members of our public that watch us on local access. It's hard for us to know exactly what those numbers are, but we don't anticipate they're, they're significant, um, just based on the feedback we get. However, we think that now may be the first time in, in a long time where there's really cheaper, better options for folks to see a better, uh, presentation of city council meetings. So what we would like to propose is that the council consider giving us direction to moving forward with, with no longer broadcasting Charter, uh, local access and, and. Norma, I'm so sorry, is it also AT&amp;T? It's both Charter and AT&amp;T? So local access, no longer broadcasting that live. However, we still will run the meetings on those local accesses. It just won't be live. As soon as the meeting's over, Norma usually is able, uh, uh, to, to get it uploaded loaded and it'll run on a continuous basis as much as we, uh, need it to. So, um, we think that that would be the best strategy at this point. However, if, you know, the council was, was very passionate, the community was very passionate about keeping it the way it is, we, we can make it work. It just needs to be clear that it won't be optimal. Um, and it's very important to us that you hear a professional presentation because we spend an awful lot of time writing, writing them and practicing them for you, so. And then any direction or comments or discussion, I'd be happy to answer.
My thought is that you should always be going for the most advanced every eighteen months because that's when the technology becomes obsolete. The more advanced that you have, the less likelihood you're going to be, uh, hacked with either malware or some other type of, uh, uh, ransomware or something like that. Even though this may not be a, um, a, a financial, but it could lead into getting into some of our other files. So whatever we can to be the most progressive in it, because we are the progressive city of action. And, and, um, we need others to follow. So let's go forward with the fastest, um, the highest quality, the most secure. And, um, making sure that, that we still maintain that old style of immediately following our, our meetings. following our, our meetings. The concern I would have is that the, the fees that both cable companies, they may consider, hey, well, we don't need to pay you anymore because they're not doing, they're not meeting our, our letter of the law. And that's something that we have to discuss with them. Maybe we could say, this is the equipment you need to bring in to continue to move forward.
Actually, in that area, as long as we are running government programs, whether it's video or PowerPoint or our announcements of events, and it's related to our agency and notifying the public, we are meeting the pegs.
Thank you.
I agree with what the mayor said, and I also like the idea of us taking care of our own equipment, because many times it's difficult to get a hold of the other agencies that we're running our equipment with, to get out here to take care of it. So I like that part of it, too.
And I don't think you fiddle very well.
So what options would people have to, the public have to see us live?
The, the short answer to that is that if you want to watch it live, you, for now, and we may expand this, but for now, what we find to be most effective is Zoom and YouTube. And, and they just wouldn't have the ability to watch us live on, on TV. Although, you know, here's how I kind of look at it. I don't have cable anymore. I don't pay for it. Everything that I have is an app or a streaming, and it all is on my TV. And so if I were to watch the city council meeting at home, I would just go to YouTube and watch it on my TV. Same, same exact thing, only a better picture, better sound.
And they can see your pores better.
And you can respond on Zoom or YouTube, can't you?
Zoom, Zoom, you can make comments, yes.
But, but on YouTube, you can communicate via email, text message.
Yeah, so, sorry, go ahead, Sean. Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna agree with all the points made. It's just, the streaming on the Charter won't be live, but it still will be accessible there. YouTube and Zoom is just more easily accessible, in my opinion. The quality is way better. And so I, I think we should focus our efforts on the better quality stuff. That's it.
Is there any input from the public?
There is no one on Zoom wishing to speak, and we did not receive any written comments.
Okay, thank you. You have direction?
Direction, up. Hello, Evelyn, you're on, you can make a comment.
Okay, um, I'm getting an echo, can you hear me?
Yep, just go ahead and speak. We, there's no echo for us. We can hear you.
Okay, since there is no rush to do this right now, could I ask that you put it off and at least ask the people out, because you don't even have any idea who, how many people are watching, how many are using it, that you put it up, put it out to the public and let, and let them know about this? You didn't have a chance to say something about it?
It's not overnight.
As far, you're talking about the equipment and stuff. Your equipment's not the only problem. You need to talk to, to Spectrum, because other folks around here have issues too. Those lines up on those poles have probably been there since Sonic was here, or maybe older. They need to be changed out. They need to put new lines up there. And that might solve all the issues without taking away, those of us who don't use the internet, like you're talking about that kind of stuff, can't, maybe can't afford it, and if we can still watch the, the meetings in real time, and try to comment. But they need to slow down and actually find out from the public how many people are using it, not using it. And talk to Spectrum, get them out there, not only with their equipment, but also with the lines.
And can you tell how many are using Zoom?
As far as your, I don't even know what YouTube is. As far as Zoom, I don't know that Zoom's the only problem you have. But I'll tell you what, I used it tonight on another, on another issue on your public hearing, and I heard that mine had it erased twice. Nobody seemed to see it, noticed it. So I don't know that Zoom, I don't know if it's Zoom or what's going on, but that's why I'm on the phone now. But you guys need to slow down and find out what the public wants, and get on Spectrum and check in to do something with those old lines.
Okay, Evelyn, is there anything else you wanted to say in public comment?
Uh, you already voted on it.
But there hasn't been a vote, they just had, discussed it.
No, no, and another, I-
No, no, not on this one. I, I, I had comments on the garbage one, but that's already too late now because nobody noticed that, so. But no, not as far as this one, that was all.
Okay, thanks, still have a couple, I'm gonna hang up, so there's not a vote anymore.
All right.
Any action that we start is not going to be immediate. I've heard points so well taken that if we try to figure out how many people are using, however, the reason why we have it a hybrid is for public participation directly at these meetings. So that is still an option. And that will be most likely the main option in the future.
Mayor, would, would, if the council wants, one of the things we could do is, is, you know, we have social media, we have Facebook, we could put out a poll that just asks, you know, members of the public to say, you know, how do you or would you prefer to participate, you know, or, or view city council meetings, and give them the options. And if we get an overwhelming response back that people like to use Charter and AT&T to watch their meetings, then we can report that back to you.
Okay.
Put it on the city station too, with the number they can call. They can't do the, because they don't use computers, they don't use Facebook, okay?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
You still have direction?
Station's not working right now, so we can't put anything out.
So ironically, what Norma just said is the TV station's not working right now, so we actually can't put it out. But we could put it on our website, we'll, we'll have conversations with people at, at the counter, we'll get some feedback to you. But, but we'll start moving in the direction that you've discussed. And you'll start to see actually shortly, some, some major technology upgrades in this room to improve video and audio and streaming, et cetera.
And, and our microphones, they don't work.
Those as well.
Thank you. Let's move forward. Comments, staff?
Thank you, mayor. Just want to send the city staff a big Merry Christmas, and also sent out our heartfelt condolences to the, the victim of the traffic fatality just, just west of town today. I drive that section of roadway every day, and, and I'm just very sad to hear, hear about that. And then mayor, if you could let me respond to your announcement very briefly after you make it.
Okay, I'm gonna skip, I'm gonna go to me, I'll make my announcement so you can-
Oh, and I'm so sorry, and Annabelle does have an announcement she'd like to make.
Okay.
Okay, um, we, Stanislaus County Registrar Voters, Donald Linder wasn't able to come to our meeting tonight, so she asked me to make comments on her behalf. She wanted to announce that the Stanislaus County Registrar Voters Office is providing voter education workshops. And this is to learn about your options to cast a ballot in the future elections, and to cover frequently asked questions relating to voter registration, vote by mail, and the elections process. This is going to take place in, at each nine cities of the county. And so the city of Riverbanks will be on January sixth, twenty twenty, at St. Francis of Rome Catholic Church. That's twenty-eight, twenty-seven, Topeka Street in Riverbank, and it'll be at six PM. And these are very informational, because the processes of voting are changing, and they are finding that there's more voter participation because of the changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we have that date again, please?
January sixth.
January sixth, six PM, St. Francis Catholic Church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna make a brief announcement before I go, continue with staff and with council comments. Mr. Sean Scully, our city manager, has submitted his resignation to take a position in the city of Lincoln. The city of Lincoln is very lucky to get you, and they're pleased about that. He has many reasons for that, and most importantly is family. And we fully support that decision. In the meantime, the interim city manager position is being offered to our assistant city manager right now, and she has indicated that she will take it. Although we do have some future comm, uh, negotiations to go through, and establishing boundaries for, for her before she, if she does take it, to move forward. And the reason why I think this is a, a good move for both, Maricela can start using her leadership skills. She is very, very knowledgeable in all aspects of programs, and all aspects of the, the projects that we're having going on up and in negotiation. She's a very good negotiator. So we have faith and confidence that under your tutelage, Mr. Scully, she is now ready to outshine you. Now, do you have a comment?
I do have a very quick comment. First off, Maricela's been outshining me since I started. So that's not gonna be hard. And I'm, I, I have quite a bit that I'd like to say, and I'm not going to do that tonight. This is not my last city council meeting. I will be, although I think we're gonna work out a way that Maricela actually sits here at your next meeting, I'm gonna be here, I'll be presenting items, I'm sure, and I'll have some written comments about all five of you, that I'm gonna want to share. But I, you know, obviously, I love Riverbank, and I love, I love this community. Obviously, also, I'm excited about the, this next step, but there's a lot of things that I'd like to reminisce with you on. I'm just not gonna do it tonight. So get ready, put on your armor, and I'll see you the first meeting in January.
Okay. Well, thank you. Council comments, council member Fernandez?
Um, no, I am a little unprepared, but I mean, it's been a, as far as the community, slower because of the holidays. I keep talking about, I'm looking through my calendar, but I keep talking about Love Riverbank, which is forthcoming, and a little delayed, but as far as I would like. But I'm gonna be providing opportunities for the community at large to get involved. Some more to come.
Thank you. Council member Campbell.
All I'll say to Sean is put your armor right back on. Sean, we're coming back.
Okay.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
Um, I attended a webinar. It was entitled A Path Forward, and it was from the Institute of Local Government, and it was regarding the challenges that immigrants are, that they face coming to America and how we can help as a local government. It talked about the lack of services or services that are needed for them when they come. And I want to give a special thanks to Sue and her team for an awesome craft fair and Christmas parade. I think it was well received by our community. And of course, a big thank you to Santa and Mrs. Claus. And I would like to invite the council to our senior brunch Friday Christmas party that we're having at the community center this Friday from ten to twelve. You all are, are welcome. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. It's been an awesome year, and thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, mayor. So just one quick thing. So the county's point in time is gearing up, and they're looking for volunteers. It's a one day to count our unsheltered homeless population. If you're interested, please reach out at two oh nine five five eight two nine six one, or CSOC at stancounty.com. The deadline is January seventh, twenty twenty-two, so please, we need, we need all the help. It's gonna improve system efficiency and target the resources we need here in Riverbank. I want to thank council member Darlene Barbara Martinez for attending. We did a little Christmas party for the homeless today. It was a pretty big success. Had some emotional moments there. It was nice to see those that are struggling the most, just kind of disconnect from their reality and enjoy the moment. I definitely got a little emotional there, so. And so Dave quoted an artist and a song earlier, so I want to end it with Ice Cube, "Today Was a Good Day."
Oh, we want to thank the community for all the donations, too, that we're giving out. Okay.
All right, thank you. Now I get to finish my comments. I want to thank this council for this last year. We have done tremendous things. It's not just for the next couple of years. Some of it we won't see until we're long, long gone. But everything that we have been doing strategically is for generations to come. And your participation, your, your work ethics to get it done truly impresses me. I want to thank you all. One of the items that we need to take an opportunity with is Stanislaus Housing Authority. We met with Barbara Kraus. She is stepping down as CEO and moving away in about the next six months. But we have some work to do. They're the ones that are gonna be doing the senior community center, if that's all approved, done deal. And she brought up a new term for me, which truly makes sense, that as we are developing our housing, or, or homeless for transitional, we start developing housing for the workforce. Workforce housing is what she called it. I think that's a term that we need to grasp. Mr. White said he has workforce development. Well, that's the workforce housing that we have to, to start providing, whether it's gonna be apartments, or it's affordable housing that they can truly afford. But as we start developing jobs per rooftop, these have to be affordable at all affordabilities. But we have to truly look at the workforce, so we can have a thriving community that will retain our youth that wants to go to Berkeley and never come home. So we want them to go to Berkeley and bring good ideas with them back to, to our region. With that, I'd like to wish everyone on the council, staff, and especially the residents of Riverbank, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, as we begin our one-hundredth year coming on up. Okay, item thirteen, closed session. Item thirteen point one, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six, agency represented city manager Sean Scully, employee organization, Riverbank Miscellaneous Employees, Riverbank Mid-Management Bargaining Unit. Item thirteen point two, public employee appointment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven, Bravo one, position title, interim city manager. With that, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on either one of these items or all?
There is no one wishing to speak.
All right, we are journey to closed session. God dang it, I gotta keep it on.